So, uh, we would like to start with a public hearing on this amendment about accessory uses. And I would look for the staff report on that.
Yes, thank you. So this was a amendment that was requested by the town councils. They were, they requested some clarifications and review of the accessory structures within the zoning ordinance. When, when sta, when, when I first started here, I noticed that there was some confusion with the way that that section was written. And so we made four recommend, recommended modifications to the language. The first one would limit the total length of any accessory structure facade to 30 feet for a residential structure. The second would limit the total height of a wall to the pitched roof to 12 feet, which is consistent with what a flat-roofed structure would have. The third would, I clarify is that if someone wants to have attic space within an accessory structure, the, in a new attic, in a new accessory structure, the attic space would need to comply with the half-story calculations. And so that would limit the, the pitch of the roof and also the amount of volume, to really limit it to a very small amount of area. And then, in order to do these changes, we also separated the commercial accessory structures, with no changes to the commercial accessory structures, but it was one paragraph before, so now it's two paragraphs. And so then, the language is attached as well. And staff suggests that this continues to allow a reasonable amount of mass, but also limits the mass. And we tested it on different types of parcels and with different scenarios, from the smallest conforming one to the much larger scenarios. And it, and it seems to work appropriately and ensures that it would not be overly restrictive, but also, so it allows enough flexibility, but basically doesn't remove the possibility of building accessory structures in a reasonable way. So with that, staff recommended to the board to recommend, to the town council, to have their public hearing and approve the suggested language as submitted to you.
Thank you. Any board member questions?
About the process or about the proposed language?
Either.
You start first.
Okay. Uh, I, I think it's a, it's probably a positive change and one I imagine is precipitated by some recent, recent examples in the town. And, um, so as much as anyone in this room, I also don't want to extend this too much because I'd like to get home and watch the Bruins as well. But I'm wondering whether, like, this still seems to create a scenario where you could build an 18-foot-tall pitched-roof structure within five feet of a property line, right? I mean, that is one scenario you could envision out of this.
Yeah, so the, the wall of a structure would be 12 feet at the five-foot line? And it can be no more than 30% of the required rear yard of a lot as well? So 30% of a rear yacht lot, you could have a wall at 12 feet, which, and then you could have a pitched roof that would be up to 18 feet tall in either direction, which is very consistent with a lot of the neighborhoods in town.
Yeah, but you could then still have, like, the gable end of a roof.
Yeah.
Parallel to the property line that has an 18-foot peak.
That's correct. And, and today, there's a lot of, and especially in the older neighborhoods, there's a lot of pitch-roofed garages that are actually at zero, or so, at the lot line, with the gable end on the lot line. And so if someone did propose a gable-ended garage, it would be five feet away from the property line.
But, but that means that the wall is 18 feet high. If it's a straight-up wall.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's a pitched roof.
It's a triangle.
Yeah, it's a triangle, so.
It's going straight up five feet from the property line. And it can go to 18 feet, you're saying, instead of the 12 feet that governs every other side?
Yeah.
Why, that doesn't make sense to me.
So, actually, what I was going to propose then is, you know how, I, I think our ordinance may have this also, that a provision where the slope is kind of proportional to the distance from the property line. So let's say that this would encourage not a gable roof, gable end facing the property, but maybe a hip roof or a gable pitching the other way, but some way to say that, like, you know, two ti, the height could not exceed two times the distance from the property line, which would then encourage somebody to build a roof so that it's not like an 18-foot-tall wall within five feet of their neighbors.
I think we had used a 45-degree angle.
That, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
So then what about the side yard? I mean, in, in one way, so this is a rear yard. It's in the rear yard setback, but you're also allowed to have a house that's, you know. We, we weren't doing a wholesale change to everything that would create every single structure in town becoming non-conforming. So we were, we, you know, there is a lot of this gable-roofed, and the, the gables either turned one way or the other, and so there is a, a triangle that's either facing one side or the other in, in the gable scenario. In, in a hip-roofed scenario, the, the roof's pitch-away on every direction.
Right. I mean, is that what we're trying to encourage or be okay with, like, a gable roof that is facing either rear, you know, side property line within five feet of that?
So we were, we were defining and restricting the amount of mass that is currently there, which it could have been 12, 13, 14, 15 feet tall with the pitch. The intent was to allow it to be restricted to the same height. And you pitch up, so if it's 24 feet, it's, it's going to have its limitations. It could be steeper, but it's, I mean, there, there is a, a mass level there, but it's like, so do you, how do you weigh that? Is it the side yard or the backyard? Which one is? From, from our perspective, it's consistent with, and it depends on the architecture of the existing other houses in, in that area. People don't want to be overly restricted with the design of their accessory building. If, like, if they want to build a garage and they have a hip-roofed house, they might want to build a hip-roofed structure. But if they have a gable roof or, you know, they, they want to replicate the look of their historic primary structure or even rotting existing accessory structure, that, that would be the case. So, I mean, if you have a recommendation with the 45-degree angle or like a pitch of 612 or, you know, like, the, but we also didn't want to overly restrict it. If someone decides to build a garage that's at, say, 10.
Just limit to the 12 feet that you say on page one. 12 feet would stop anything from going to 18. A gable is an 18-foot-high wall.
So then you would, you would basically remove the possibility of having pitch-roofed?
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I think pitch roofs are probably the right solution for something that close to the property line. It doesn't put something right in the face of the neighbor that's 18 feet high, which I think is what Jason's getting at. But the way I read this is that you cannot have a wall on any of the sides of an accessory structure that exceeds 12 feet. You can pitch back from such a wall.
So then you're, you're telling everybody.
Let me finish. You can pitch back from such a wall at 12 feet and get to 18, but you can't just carry the wall up to 18 feet and, and call it the pitch.
So that's a hip. You're saying that all accessory structures shall be a hip roof then? That's what you're saying?
I'm not saying they have to be a hip roof. I'm just saying that if you follow this guideline, they would not end up with an 18-foot wall facing any one particular direction.
When you say guideline, do you mean the ordinance?
Well, the language that it says here. I don't know exactly what we're talking about.
D2.
We were just talking about this piece right here?
The actual language, yes.
Not the front page.
This is the zoning amendment, and it says that on a.
Then you would need to put that same, what you said on the first page is limiting the total length of a side to 30, limiting the height to, to 12. You would have to include that language here, which is not here. It should be there. If you're introducing it as a concept to be embodied in the regulation, then it should be in the regulation.
If, if the board has a recommendation for a change to this, then please recommend it. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying, I'm not trying to.
Right, it is there. It's under D1.
And D2 as well. Says no exterior wall of any accessory building shall exceed 12 feet in height.
So you cannot have an 18-foot-high gable wall.
You can't have an 18-foot-high straight wall.
Right. Just long as it's enforced that way.
Well, now that you're saying it this way, when this was written, the intention was that, and this is the way the original ordinance in the 1930s was written, the, the, the roof would start at the pitch, so that's the hot top of the, but the gable end would not be part of the wall. It's part of the roof structure. That, you, so you can still have an 18-foot point, like Jason just pointed out.
Then I think you need to rewrite this to include that.
Well, you can make a recommendation, and then you can recommend it to the town council. I don't, I, we as staff feel that having one, one wall, two walls out of four of an accessory structure like we've had is an appropriate amount of, it's, it's limiting the impact substantially from what it was before, which, it could have been a 14-foot wall before. As, as long as there's any kind of pitch, it could be any type of height.
So this language came from the TC, from the town council?
This language came from staff.
Okay.
And we're making a recommendation to, to you, and then you're having a public hearing right now, and you're recommending to the town council what you would prefer to see if you don't like what staff recommended.
Okay.
So if, if you would rather not have a gable end, that was the intent of this language?
I would just say that, that the town would be better off if nobody was facing their neighbor with an 18-foot-high gable wall five feet from the property line. So if you precluded the provision that would allow that on the property line side, that might be sufficient, because then you'd always have an eve line facing towards the neighbor.
But there's the, what about the side, that's, I just asked you about the side yard, and so that's a hip. Like, it's both property lines, right? Usually.
Tucked it in the corner, I suppose, yeah.
That's what you usually do. It's, you, you have a driveway of one side or the other, and it goes to a structure, right? And it's usually a garage.
I mean, usually the gable end is kind of facing the driveway.
Which also faces the rear.
Also faces the rear.
And often, the other property also has their garage in the same location, but.
I think the 45-degree clause might be the way to handle it, though, is just because then it just has a, it's a blanket way of just making sure that there isn't this kind of mass that close to the property line. So like, say, you know, five feet away, you can go up to 10, and then nine feet away, you can go as high as 18. And however that.
Yeah, that would solve it.
I, I feel like it, you're saying if.
Forty-five-degree roof isn't.
At, at 12 feet, using a 45-degree angle.
You couldn't go that high, yeah.
It sets the plane of where you can put the structure. So you, if you move it back seven feet, you could have a.
That would guarantee a flat section, because you can't go 45 feet. Or, I mean, 45 degrees for 15 feet. You'd be going up 15 feet on top of 12.
And, I mean, the reality is, in most cases, Watertown has very constrained property setups. And so you, you're really limited on where and how you can build a accessory structure because of the 10 feet from the house, the five feet from the side property line, and the five feet from the rear property line, and then the 30% total of the required rear property line. So, so there's, there's already very, very substantial restrictions on where and how you can place the accessory structure on a residential property. In, in some instances, there's, there's anomalies where you have a much larger parcel, and there's a lot more flexibility. And, and those are the ones where, you know, so, so in these other cases, when you're setting these things, we may end up with a lot of hip roofs, or we may end up with a lot of flat roofs.
I think it's simpler just to require that any, any wall facing a property line doesn't exceed the 12-foot line. That, that will drive the design in those cases to a, a hip roof solution, which is fine. 45 degrees is kind of an arbitrary dimension that isn't, doesn't show up in garage design. Not residential garage design, for sure. So it just seems kind of easier, just, just so you can't go above 12 feet at a property line, and that'll solve it. They'll either do a flat roof, or they'll do a pyramidal roof, not pyramidal, but a hip roof.
So you're, you're suggesting to the board that hip roofs or flat roofs should be the only two types of accessory structures that are allowed in town?
No. I'm just saying that if, if a garage wants to be placed at the corner where it confronts two other property owners, then they should be respected, and that the height of, of the wall of the garage should not exceed 12 feet on either of those.
On either side.
On either side, that's all. That's what I'm saying. There's certainly many designs.
But that's what you, that's, so what you're saying then is that, I mean, what, I mean, unless you're building a, a slope that way and that way, and you end up with, like, a, a triangle.
And I'm just saying what, what I would like to propose, while you're around doing it.
Sorry.
I'm trying to argue about whether it's the right thing or what it will result in. The thing it will result in that I'm sure of is that no neighbor will be looking at an 18-foot wall five feet from their property line.
Okay, if that's, I mean, if the other board members feel that you would like to remove the ability to have the other types of accessory structures for, that's what you're, that's what you're proposing, it sounds like. I'm just giving you the analysis from, when we have to review it for zoning. You are proposing, if, if you write it a certain way, which is, I mean, so maybe someone can start at eight feet, is what you're saying? And they can pitch it up, but, but they can never have a gable end. Jason's suggestion creates a 45-degree plane, which is very standard. Or you can do a 30-degree plane, you know, like, the, the plane, and that's where you have to meet the requirement. So you move it to 10 feet, and you can maybe build, or, you know, 15.
Kind of putting like a, you know, like a, a 45-degree angled sloped envelope on your property. And you can do whatever you want within that sloped.
Or does it start at the property line?
At five feet from the property.
Because we've already.
So they couldn't put a straight wall up at five feet? They'd have to end on the back or pull it away?
No, I'm saying, like, two ti, I say, what I'm saying is you start with two times the setback, and then 45 degrees up from that, so.
Yeah, diagram it.
So you start at 12 feet, right?
Like, I would say, so five feet off, you could do up to 10 feet. And then from that point on, I know you can't.
Well, then you do the 45.
And then you do the 45 plane from five, from 10 feet up and five feet horizontal.
For some reason, that seems, it's not a practical solution anybody would use with a garage.
So, but it, from a zoning, so we use this in a multiple places?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
So you, you have the rear or the side property line.
Yeah.
You go to five feet, you're allowed to go 12 feet up. It's a step.
12 or 10.
And then that's a 45.
Well, right now, it's 12.
Okay, yeah.
If you want to, and then you have to build this within that. So if you build it here.
Well, and, and, and cap it at.
I mean, but it's turned the other way.
But, and cap it at 18 feet.
Right. And that part would stay. It's all, all you're doing is adding an additional, the, the roof line shall be in a plane starting at 12 feet, five feet from the property line.
That accomplishes the same thing.
Yeah.
Going at an angle of 45 degrees, which is.
Not realistic carpentry, that's all. Doesn't matter.
No, they, they could still build an eight and 12 or six and 12 roof.
We use that for the Pleasant Street, and we used it for Arsenal.
So, is there a paragraph to change this, or?
Go for it.
Oh, boy.
I've always thought, I have, just have to say, I'm always amazed by this. First of all, where the 30 feet came from and where the 12 feet came from.
That was my question, where did 30 feet come from?
Anyway, they're, they're here. But I've always, always thought that these should have been expressed in a diagram. You know, it should always be a diagram.
I can tell you why 30 feet is, a 24-foot garage is a generous but standard two-car garage. And the extra six feet, for someone who has the luxury of having that extra space to be able to build on, provides workshop, storage, all the things that you wish you had in your garage. So it's a, it's a reasonable upper limit, and most people would not be able to ever build that in Watertown.
So do we have a way of?
Well, I could try. I mean, Gideon might be better at it, but I would say it's pretty much everything that's already here with the addition of a clause that says no point on the structure can be, oh, I don't know. Actually, I'd have to wordsmith it, but.
Let me, I can draft it.
I think, I mean, the diagram kind of tells the story.
Except we can't. I'm going to go to the Pleasant Street and remember what I did there.
Are you trying to do this as we, as we watch?
Yeah, if you want to talk about other things, I'll, I'll give you some language.
Can't go on to another project.
I mean, if there's other discussion points, I think.
I don't think there are, are there?
I'm done. I have, I have two quick things.
Oh, we do have them.
So as I read this, read through this, paragraph H just seemed to be laying out there, and it seemed like it would make more sense to be as part of, at the end of paragraph C. Where we're talking about setbacks.
It's like a definitional thing at the end, yeah.
And then the other thing I thought of, and I know this is implicit, obviously, in all the regulations, but with accessory uses, it's easy to forget that there's maximum FAR requirements and building coverage and impervious requirements, and whether we put something in there and just make it black and white that permitted accessory uses, when combined, shall not exceed the maximum FAR, the maximum building coverage, or the impervious coverage permitted in the district. Just so it's right out there, so. Even though it's implicit, obviously, in, in the other, the rest of the regulations.
Yeah, the section that regulates coverage tells you when, when it's exempt and when it isn't.
Okay.
So we would have to be really careful if we start adding it here, because then we'd have it referenced in two places. And if we're not, if we don't get the same reference, then it'll be wrong. We'll have.
I'm not saying put like an actual number. I'm just saying reference to like, that it shall not exceed that for that district. So if it's in a, like, a single-family district, there's obviously, there's that table in section five.
Right, and it's just building coverage. It doesn't, FAR doesn't count.
Right.
So, um.
Mr. Chairman?
So the rest of it's always been that way?
Yeah.
So I guess the question is whether you want to start doing more adjustments to the section?
No, I mean, did we pick up the?
So I, this, so this is the, so I would propose within five feet of a property line the, a pitched roof shawl have a maximum ratio of one to one in parentheses, 45 degrees. Period.
Is that it?
Well, you have to prevent them from doing a non-pitched 18-foot-high wall.
That's already, that's, so a non-pitched one is capped at 12 feet, period. Right, a flat roof, a non-pitched, is 12 feet.
Okay, so you're saying for any pitched roof.
So any pitched roof.
Plus the 45 degrees.
Sorry, no.
Read it again. I didn't, didn't strike me that you had it, or I may have misunderstood.
Well, Jason's suggestion is not limiting the ability to build a gable end above 12 feet. Jason's suggestion was saying that if you're building a gable end, you will end up, if you want to have it be taller.
It has to be further.
It's going to have to fit in that plane.
Right, so which means it'd either be further back. If it's, if it's a straight gable wall, it has to be 10 feet back, or.
Your suggestion was to remove it in its entirety.
Yeah.
So, so between the two of you, the, the whole board needs to make a recommendation. If you want to remove the, so we, we already struck out, so just for context, we already removed the ability, we used to say pitched, gable, hip, gambrel, and mansard. So just, just so you know, someone could have built a mansard roof, which makes no sense from a perspective of like a, a one-story building, right? Up to 18 feet tall. So, so we've removed all of those things that were by right and allowed by anyone in town as part of this amendment, to clarify that it's, it's either pitched or not. If someone wants to try to come up with a mansard that fits the half-story calcs and all that stuff. So, so you're sugge, you're suggesting further limitations. One is that, one option is the, the shawl basic, I think, you're the architects, some of you, is, I think that by limiting both sides, by saying this, you know, if you're only at five feet, if you're at seven feet, I'm not sure what your language is exactly, but it would limit the ability to have anything but a mansar, or.
A hip.
A hip.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of what I would.
So that's one scenario. Or the other scenario is to create this, this language, which I just read, which would be a pitched, any pitched roof accessory structure shall have a main roof where the wall connection, if it's, you know, it's whatever I read, I should have written it down, but someone wrote it, right?
Yeah, I can read it back to you.
Yeah. So, so that would limit it so that at, at five feet, it's 12 feet. I mean, yeah, five feet, it's 12 feet. So if someone wants to build a one-car garage and the walls are at eight feet, I bet they can probably do a pitch. And the gable end will go up to 12. And the gable end will go up to 12 feet.
Right, if it's like a three and 12 or four and 12, if they wanted to do something like that, they actually could.
They probably could. We, we're, we're not trying to prescribe what the design is in zoning. We're, we're just saying, these are the, this is the box limitation and so we're adding an angle. So that's one scenario is adding the angle. Or the other scenario is to try to come up with language as Gary's suggesting. But that language has to be pretty clear. We can't have like loopholes in that or, when you just say facing the property line, it's like, well, all three sides face the property line.
I'm fine with the essence of what Jason's saying if we describe it the way we were just talking about. So within five feet, you go up 12 feet and then you start essentially a development envelope.
Yeah.
And that takes off at, at 45 degrees.
Right, and so that way, if they want to build a gable-shaped building, they can do so just further away from the property.
Exactly. Or shorter walls.
Or shorter walls, exactly. So I think it, it's still, it doesn't limit the creativity or the options. It just, it just establishes that sloped envelope hovering over the, over the site.
So.
However it's worded.
So does the planning staff have enough, Gideon, to put that together?
Yeah, because Payson wrote it down and I didn't, I read it out loud. So I do, we have an additional sentence to add to the D2.
To D2, yeah.
And then Payson had suggested moving the accessory structures.
H.
The problem with moving that is right now it's any accessory structure, which includes not just buildings. And it also is commercial, we've broken up commercial and residential because historically they were all combined.
Okay.
Which never worked well, but, so by, by keeping it there, it's its own thing and it just says, and we know where it is as staff when we're reviewing stuff, but, but if you move it, you would have to, where, where were you proposing to move it?
I was saying, I was suggesting to move it to the end of paragraph C.
So, so that would only apply to residential then?
So the in addition, the, the in addition, no accessory building facade is only for residential? See, it wasn't called out as residential, so that's why I thought you were. Yeah, that the end of C, so C starts out, no residential accessory structure.
Yeah.
And then the last addition says, in addition, no accessory building facade.
Yeah, so it's only for residential. C is residential.
All right, see, when I read that, I, I thought it might be residential or any, any accessory building. So maybe we just need to insert the word residential in there, if that's what the intention was.
So well, there's structures and there's buildings, right?
Yeah, you're just suggesting, saying residential.
I think, yeah, we just add in residential. Because of what, like you said, it was not clear to me that that was intended to be only for residential.
No, yes, so no.
This process makes you want to run for Congress, doesn't it?
So in C, I added no residential accessory building facade? Because we certainly are not trying to limit commercial building accessory structures.
So if we add the residential, then we just leave H where it is?
Okay.
So we have, we have a document now, do we not?
One other point I wanted to just ask, if I could, Gideon. Under paragraph G, the last sentence, it says, "The above regulations shall apply to those, shall not apply to those swimming pools that are portable in nature." Is an above-ground swimming pool considered portable in nature?
I would defer to the zoning enforcement officer to make a determination on what scale of portable, because I know they have portable Olympic swimming pools.
I don't think the intent of the zoning would be to allow above-ground pools in your front yard.
No, exactly.
No, and, and again, I, yeah, that's not what we're reviewing. We certainly didn't add that to our legal to talk about that section, but I would leave it to him. But yeah, I think there's a level of permanency that, and it's based on the depth and the size, and the health department would also trigger regulations.
Kiddy pools are okay, but, a kiddy pool is okay, but a six-foot terrace surrounded above-ground pool might be considered more permanent? You could drag over the truck.
Yeah.
I take it it hasn't come up, so let's not worry about it.
So, so do we have a motion? I mean, do we have a?
Yep. Do we need public comment?
Yeah.
Is there a public comment? Good grief.
Good evening. My name's Lisa Feldner, District B Town Councilor. Just a couple of questions or, or things to think about. I'd be curious, especially when, maybe when it comes to council, getting referred to being tested on a number of lots in town. And I personally speak for myself, but I think for the council, it would be really helpful if this came forward. If you provided some of that material, give us visuals to understand implications of this language in zoning and the studies that you did. And just to note that there seems to be a lot of confusion in practicality about side yard or backyard and how that gets defined. And I know that the zoning officer determines front, back, side on properties, but given a lot, all the non-conforming uses, I'm kind of assuming that your studies would show that it's not a concern because the lot isn't big enough maybe to build an accessory building. But I just wanted to point that out because of, again, practically speaking, you know, unit that it, it is really the front. It's not a side, but zoning may say that's side. So I don't know if that affects thoughts on that.
I'll just, I can just speak to that really quickly. This language with the new ratio is for a, any yard setback. So the, the structure, starting at five feet from a property line, it doesn't matter.
Which property?
What's property line? So it doesn't, we are not, because you're right, the adjacent property could be a side yard or a rear yard or even potentially part of their front yard, but that would be really weird, but it could, I mean, there's some really weird scenarios out there that you can never predict them all. But this, this language doesn't apply to that.
Okay, and then on the height, I've gotten questions about lots that have unusual grades. And maybe that's another discussion, but how zoning, when you're talking about the height, how the measurement, where it's taken from on the grade of the lot with the changes on that lot, so, if that's something to think about. And then, and then the last thing, since we're looking to potentially accessory dwelling units, I don't know. We would just revisit that when we get there and not be concerned that we're, we're writing language that's potentially going to already be outdated.
I would suggest that that would be a completely different section and it wouldn't be called an accessory structure, which is for a use sec, as part of the primary use of the site. It would probably end up, if, if you ended up going down that path, that's a completely different. And yes, if, if we had to alter this section again, it's because of a different reason, so.
Okay.
It's, it's not a concern.
And then residents are just curious if members of the planning board have been by the Moore Street construction site recently and seen the result there and good care to comment on that or not. I think people are, think it's, you know, very favorable, but residents love hearing that board members make site visits. Thank you.
So, is, Gideon, is there a document clear enough that we can, is there, is it turned out we're adding one or two sentences and we can read that now and then vote on this?
Payson, can you reread the sentence today?
Yeah, so, so the two changes I have are to paragraph C. And at the last, second to last line, we're going to add the word residential between no and accessory. And then in paragraph D2, at the end, we're going to say, within five feet of any property line.
Any, yeah, not just side or rear, just any property line.
Yeah, any property line, a pitched roof shall have a maximum ratio of one to one, and then you parenthetical 45 degrees.
My bad.
That's not quite right.
Did you just create the envelope or did you create a limit to hip roof?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be the actual roof. It should, with a maximum ratio.
Yeah, with a maximum ratio, right.
Okay.
Shall have a maximum ratio, pitched roof, well, you said, you said pitched roof.
Yeah.
So. So within five feet of any property line, a pitched roof shall have a maximum ratio of one to one, 45 degrees.
It's not a pitched roof we're talking about. It's a development envelope.
Yeah.
It's the volume within, within which you can build it.
I know, I messed up.
Shall we say the structure?
A pitched roof structure.
Is constrained within an envelope.
So within five feet of any property line, the structure shall have a max, maximum.
Or, I mean, isn't there wording that says shall be constrained to a plane that starts at
Shall.
12 feet above grade at a distance of five feet from the property line and continuing up at a 45-degree angle from there? I'm just trying to think of it.
Well, what we missed was the roof wall connection.
I, I felt we wanted to include the idea, though, that you, you could start lower.
Yeah, so it's, so basically, it's within five feet of any property line, the maximum, the maximum, the maximum height, the structure shall, you know, this language isn't quite working because of the way it's written, but it's, so there's a roof wall connection at, at 10, at 12 feet.
We've already said that the first part of D already says, no part of residential accessory building shall be located near than five feet to any side or rear lot line. So that's established already. But then in addition to that, I think it should say something like
Starting.
Starting at five feet from the property line, no point on, no, no point on the roof or the top of the wall shall exceed.
No point in the building.
The building shall exceed or protrude beyond a plane that starts at, like, I think some zoning ordinances are written that way.
I just figured out why ours, why it works in this and it's not working on ours. We're trying to do it the opposite. Where at five feet, you start the plane. And in the Pleasant Street, it was within 40 feet, but that, that doesn't work.
Right.
Within 40 feet, you needed to use the plane for any.
I don't know if we have to resolve this. I know.
I can.
I know, for instance, the Cambridge zoning ordinance has, has something in that that describes that perfectly. And it has to do with like.
If you give me the guidance, I will draft it, but it's been a really long day, so my brain is not.
Do we have to, do we have to make a motion on this tonight?
Well, you don't have to. You could continue it to the next month's meeting. There is a very heavy agenda, but you, I mean, I also sketched out what we want and I just need to turn that into words.
Right.
And, and make sure it's right. Yeah, we all have the same sketch, so I just need to turn that into words. And I want to test it with our zoning enforcement officer. I always run everything by more than one person to make sure there's no issue with the language. So if you, if you provide the motion that you, you want staff to provide the five-foot setback, no greater than a 12-foot wall and the building envelope within the 45-degree plane at 12 feet. I think I just said the language, but.
So.
Can you circulate that in a day or two? So we can just have a guaranteed follow-up on that?
Yeah, we, we can share the language with you. I can't guarantee that it would be in a day or two, but, but we would be able to get it to you before the, it's scheduled with.
You're going to be writing it in your head on the way home tonight.
So I think we have enough.
Because the zoning officer needs to see it too.
I think we have enough to vote on, do we not?
Yeah, a motion to.
Is there, is there a motion to do that?
Sure. Make a motion that the planning board recommended to the town council to approve changes to Article Four, Section 4.03 accessory uses as outlined in the staff report with the following changes. In paragraph C, add the word residential between no and accessory. And then the board direct staff to develop language concerning the building height of 12 feet and the 45-degree plane.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That would carry. So we're closing a public hearing on that subject. And our next order of business is the administrative business to approve the minutes of, of May 8. Is there, have we all read the minutes? And is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we finally get on to our first case for the notice, 15 Fuller Road.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Ken Lightner, representing Tim and Julie Cunningham, who are the owners of 15 Fuller Road. They've owned it for a number of years now, have undertaken substantial renovations to the property. They would like to reconstruct their rear porch to the property and they need zoning relief under 4.06A for the extension of an R conformity. But I'll try to keep it as simple as possible. There was an existing six-foot-eight by 16-foot two-story porch for which they received a demolition permit and tore it down, which they'd like, now they want to rebuild. It was in a horrible condition and very unsafe. It was pulling away from the house. So through many meetings with planning staff, we've brought together a plan with the architect, Eric Larson, which replicates in large part the original porch, but it has a bump out and incorporates the, you're talking about gable, the hip roof coming, there's a minor hip roof coming back into the house. So what is happening here is that there's a section, it's about 75 to 80 square feet of extra porch. Part of the porch on the second story is not covered to reduce the, the FAR. So they have an area outside and it's covered by a hip roof, as I said, a minor hip roof tying back into the major porch. And it, it, it changes the ratios. The ratios are non-conforming, so we need relief under 4.06A. The FAR was .63, it's going to .65 based on this, based on, for this purpose, about 72 square feet of extra covered space. The original portion on the second story is not being covered. As you walk out the door on the second story, it's open space until you get onto, under the cover decked, which is probably about eight feet or so. And then we have a higher lot coverage ratio going from essentially 36% to 40%, but that lot coverage race, that lot coverage is all on the second story. Nothing on the first story is being masked. They're respecting the setback to the garage. The garage is, the setback is six feet. So what they did, if you can look at the plan, it jogged six feet by six feet around the garage, not to make that any non-conforming. And they also set back the deck on the northeast leap bound to 10.1 feet, where the existing house is about 5.7. It isn't quite the six that it's supposed to be. So they pushed the house back in order to accommodate the side yard setback and not seek relief for that. The only relief they are seeking is for the increase of about 78, 75 square feet for the FAR and about 4% for the lot coverage, which is all on the second story. In preparation of the plans, the Cunningham's have approached the neighbors and they have received letters and support for anyone who would be affected by this. The porch is on the second story where it's going, so it has a view over Victory Field. It meets the criteria for a special permit finding in that it's an appropriate use. There are other decks in this area and this kind of imitates it to an extent. It's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Appropriate facilities are going to be provided and it's going to be built in accordance with the building code and much safer than what was there in the past. So the long and the short of this is a section of about six feet by 13 to 78 square feet, which is increasing the FAR and the lot coverage ratios. So it suggests to you that we meet the criteria.
Thank you. Is there a staff report here? I'm sure there is.
Ken went into it in pretty good detail. Staff worked with applicants on an initial design, which was larger for the second floor and extended closer to the adjacent property line. Staff suggested that they try to comply with the side yard setback. They made some changes to that. We looked at the roof line design and talked about shed gomer, shed roof lines versus hip roof design and they proposed a hip roof based on the discussions we had and, based on these changes and keeping that setback between the existing structure and the garage. Staff recommends that the, the design is not substantially more detrimental and the request proposal for open porches is not substantially more detrimental than the existing condition for the neighborhood. Based on Ken's information as well. And there is a condition, there are a series of conditions that the last condition references. the last condition references limiting this to a basically an open air porch. And that's the staff's report. I mean, also, to be clear, staff suggested that the building coverage, although the percentage is over four percent, it's actually seventy-eight square feet of actual area change, which is a fairly small number from a perspective of the entire site. That staff recommended a conditional approval of the special permit finding. Thank you.
So are there board member questions on this project?
Just a couple. So on the dimensional table, this this one that was in the application?
Yes.
There are substantial deviance from deviations, rather, from the one that's in the document set. And if someone could just go over those and clarify them.
I'm sorry, we may change as to the documents after the review by the planning staff, and I don't know if you have
These documents? So this changed after this had already gone in?
Correct. And then we, I did resubmit the table of regulations to follow everything, but I don't know
To the zoning board.
may have gotten.
Yeah, it's it's off. I don't know how the board as a whole feels about proceeding with something that's inconsistent in terms of the materials.
Ken, I I can speak to that just briefly. The the zoning, the the plot plan was updated based on the new plans, and so all the information changed on that spreadsheet. So they did submit a new sheet to the zoning board clerk for the record, and that is being, that's been processed, but it's
Just the sheet, is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's the application, so.
Dimensional table?
Yeah. So that's not, so from our perspective, the plot plan that's stamped, that is not a record. That's just the application. So from our perspective, that can be completely wrong. There's no one that's reviewing it other than us. I always use the plot plan, and that's why we required a stamped plot plan for projects that are changing, increasing flurry or.
Square footage is are fairly different, given that the project itself is not very substantial. The differences are So it's puzzling to me, just trying to look at, look at the document and follow the bouncing ball.
Right.
The numbers are different. There's a twenty-six-foot side yard setback on the right side, which I can't find anywhere on the on the plot plan. I didn't didn't know where it was, or how it related to this application. So it was just confusion, perhaps not consequential.
Yeah.
Do you know anything about the twenty-six-foot?
No, no.
On the driveway side?
On the on the driveway side to the, I think it's on the proposed to the deck itself.
To the deck itself, okay. So not the house?
Not the house. The house is about eight feet on one side and about six on the other.
And that deck is where it was before?
Oh, okay, so you got twenty and then six.
The deck is is on the, on the northwesterly side, starting at the same point, it's pushing beyond about four feet. But within the side yard setback, it's ten point one.
Okay.
So are there other questions?
I was puzzled why the, how the height dropped, but maybe that's another question.
Again, that's for the addition. The existing height is about thirty feet.
Yeah.
Want to exemplify what the height of the of the minor hip roof would be, twenty-six. That's for the proposed. So I think that's why it's it's not for the existing house, but for the proposed height of the
For the roof over the deck.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And one thing, just for me, Gideon, if you don't mind. So outdoor area is calculated in FAR?
Covered, covered outdoor areas. So if you have two decks, if the second floor deck is open to the air, open to the sky, that's not counted. But the first floor deck under it would be considered a porch, and we would count it towards FAR.
Do you count a hundred percent of it, or half of it, or?
It's the the entire first floor, if it's covered, would be counted.
And in this case, also the portion of the second floor deck that's covered.
Right, so the, so, right, so in this case, the first floor is counted, and the portion of the second floor that has a a roof over it is counted towards FAR. And that's true for throughout all of town.
Anything else? Does the general audience have a comment here? No.
No. Well, you can speak in supportive if.
Home free, I think.
No, I mean, I want to just thank, we spent since last October on this, right? My company, I was very pitched up, my company privately staffed, I started, now it will help you, so that's how long this is going to go on. So I want to thank Gideon, Andrea, Ken, and Eric. They put a lot of time into this. Something to me will go to the porch, right?
Just like the one next door, too, it looks like.
So if there are no other comments here, do we have a motion from someone?
Sure.
Recommendation to the zoning board.
So I make a motion that the planning board recommend to the Board of Appeals conditional approval of the requested special permit finding under Section four point oh six A, based on the finding that the proposed project meets the necessary criteria set forth in the Watertown zoning ordinance, subject to conditions one through seven described in the staff report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. So you go to the zoning board in two weeks, I think.
Thank you.
So, let's see, Ingrid, Nyack Street was withdrawn, but we have to continue the Loomis Avenue, is that right? So is that a motion? So we have a motion to continue Loomis Avenue project.
Are we continuing it a month, or six months?
No, to the date, so until next month.
Next meeting.
Just the next meeting, yeah. Is there a session?
I move that we continue the Loomis Avenue case to the next
Yeah, okay.
Hearing.
Good, so.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So sixteen Waltham Street?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Vahay Ohanesian. I am an architect, and I'm also the buyer of this property, which is under purchase and sale at this time. And this is for my own residence, and I have a wife and four children. We rent right now, where we're looking to move into this property once it's approved and built with the addition. As you can see, the existing structure is a, I believe it's an eighteen fifty, somewhere in that date range.
Potential.
Farmhouse, and it's a two-story, very very limited tight space on the second floor. And we're proposing to add in addition, the existing structure is already non-conforming in the front and the back, and we talked about in a different issue, the garages, in this case, this garage actually goes over the back property line onto the neighbor. So the project entails removing the front existing enclosed porch, removing a small one-story bump out on the left side, which is the east, also removing two accessory structures, a shed towards the back and a small shed-like structure, and then building an addition in its place, a two-story addition. And then also extending the front of the garage towards the front of the property by about three and a half feet here, so that a normal-sized car can actually fit in there. This is a single-car garage.
Does it have a gable facing the neighbor?
It does. It's nowhere near eighteen feet, though.
Better not be more than twelve feet high.
So. So the proposed addition is further away from the front property line than the original front porch is currently located by a few feet. And then the rear is maybe a few inches actually closer. It obviously is existing non-conforming. You can see the twenty-foot requirement is almost right through the middle of that structure. And you can see that the lot shape itself is very narrow and long and pointy to the, pointing to the, coming to a point on the right side. So the basic criteria are that we're remaining, making the setbacks better for the most part with the addition, and we're staying within the lot coverage maximum. The the back of the existing house, so the existing house, for the most part, on the exterior, the main part of the structure is remaining. The back side of the roof is being opened into a shed roof. A dormer to house one of the bedrooms. And that's let's see. You can see that on the proposed rear right on A two point two.
On A, on what?
A two point two. The top two renderings show the existing and the proposed from the same angle. So there's a small gable that's fairly low in ceiling height, and so we're increasing that with a an extension and then a shed. You could call it a dormer, but it's a low-pitched roof there. The new addition is a two-story with an unfinished attic, just accessible by a drop-down ladder without a walk-up.
So it it remains a single-family house?
Remains a single-family house. It's pretty much a an open plan on the first level. The second floor of the existing house on the front side is going to become a cathedral space, just because it's really low in that second floor, fairly unusable. You can see that on A three, the open-to-below area on the lower-left plan, the second-floor plan.
So have you told us what you want to tell us? So we need to go to a staff report?
Yeah. In this case, staff did meet with the petitioner several times. We met with them both for the zoning relief and also because the property is older than fifty years, and so if there is substantial changes to the existing structure, it could trigger a demolition delay. So we worked with him, his initial design, we felt would require the main structure to go to the historical commission for demolition review, because the entire roof was being removed and several of the facades were being removed as part of the original design. So he made, he made changes to that. Then he made an additional change to look at a a roof deck, and staff felt that that could have a significant impact because of the location, so he altered that plan, and this is the plan before us tonight. Staff felt that although this is close to many property lines, the site is a very unusual site, and it would actually merit the level of a variance because of the area of, land area versus the amount of building asked for, and so from that perspective, it was helpful for us to get it in that way. And based on the the development and the substantial keeping of the original structure, acknowledging that eighteen-fifties house along the Redwood Corridor, and then adding on this additional structure that's, it's much larger, but it's separate, we we felt that this was an appropriate request. And also knowing what the adjacent approval and project is, and actually having it built there, it seemed to be in keeping with that mass on that end, and so from our perspective, we felt that this was not substantially more detrimental or impactful to that neighborhood, so it's the one criteria for a finding. We also felt that keeping the garage, which was a part of the last amendment, was appropriate. Based on the land area, he was going to remove it, and adding on a few feet to the front in order to allow something other than a Model A vehicle to park in it was appropriate as well. And so with that, staff recommended a conditional approval of the project as most recently submitted. So with that, I hand it back over to the board and the public, if there's anyone.
So, yeah, probably not too many questions. So let's start with this end. Is there, are there board member questions?
Yeah, so the historical commission weighed in, so they're good, if I understood you correctly?
No, so to be clear, they're, they have a separate hearing, and their hearing is a demolition delay
Okay.
hearing, so it's not about design.
Okay.
Their hearing is scheduled for
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, yeah. There's two meetings scheduled tomorrow night. That is now only, they are now only looking at the two somewhat dilapidated accessory structures on the site that are in the yard. And they're no longer, you know, he's withdrawing the garage component of the demolition request from them. Or he's planning on withdrawing it.
All right, and then similar to what Gary brought up on the last case, it was noted in here that the dimensional table was updated, so I assume an updated dimensional table application has been submitted to the zoning board?
It has not yet been updated.
Yeah.
This was submitted to us on
Yeah, so we want to do it consistent with the last case. We should do that. And I I went out there and looked at, just thinking about how does it fit in the context and the fact that it matches three eighty-five Pleasant Street behind and the house next door as well, so in terms of mass.
Yeah, yeah, I took a look at the, at the site and the surroundings, which have been changing, obviously, extremely. And I'm actually kind of impressed with how you've managed to build a larger building, but evoke the farmhouse kind of look to it.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it was
And these drawings are better than we often see.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It is a very tricky site to deal with, I believe, now.
Thank you.
But I think it's it's worth, it's worthwhile. That's nice.
Barry O?
No, I'm good. Yeah, I mean, I I would say, I think in any other neighborhood or in most other contexts, this would not be appropriate, but having visited the site and see what your neighbor behind you and kind of at the end of that peninsula, I think it's fine. I I actually kind of like the offset of the the vertical siding to sort of offset it from the original house. It's interesting when you look at the plan, like, you could never build anything on this site with current setbacks, so
Right.
It's it's an interesting sort of modification to, you know, actually make it a buildable site. And there's only one thing I find a little bit weird, and and this is not relevant to this, I guess, but just where the eaves meet at the corner, it's kind of like one comes in just a few inches, almost taller than the other one. You can see it on the next, on A two point two. Is that, can you raise the eve of the new part just a little bit so that they're
Yeah, I
It's kind of taking a bite out of the roof?
I I noticed that, and I do need to make some adjustments, minor adjustments to clean that up.
Yeah. Other than that, I I'm in favor.
You're referring to the
This right here?
rear right, is that right?
Rear, yeah, you can see it on rear right and rear left in a little bit. Yeah, the eaves are just slightly misaligned.
Yep.
It's almost like that, yeah, the lower one should be pitched a little more.
True.
So I had two thoughts here. The, when it says lot size is seven thousand seven, that's before the proposed easement? Or is that after the proposed easement?
So the easement includes the seven thousand
It's part of the seven thousand.
Yeah, so so the lot lines will remain as the entire all the way to the pointed end there. So the story is that when I first made the offer to purchase the property, there was a plan, a cert, a plot plan by the engineer showing a property, a proposed property line, where what's now the easement would have been actually given to the, would have been given away, and my lot would have been six thousand and sixty-nine square feet, not seven thousand seven hundred forty-seven. So when that was changed after, you know, discussions and, you know, with the seller, who's the developer of the property to the south is the seller. That was clarified to become an easement, and so the lot size remains seven thousand seven forty-seven. That's what allowed me to keep the garage where I was proposing to demolish it before
And we
because of lot coverage.
And and we determined, we reviewed it, and because the other site, it wasn't a required part of their open space or any of their zoning requirements. part of their open space or any of their zoning requirements, this site can still benefit from the land area. It's open space, but it's not a required amount of open space for the other site. So, so from our perspective, it can still be, it's, it's still part of the slot, and it's an easement. He can't build on it, he can't do anything to it, but it'll remain as a support.
So you provided these nice drawings. What you haven't shown us is the abutting building, which is right there. And when you are looking at this from the sidewalk or even on the property, it is right there. And so, anyway, in a normal situation, we might have said, you got to come back and show us the context. I don't think that's going to apply tonight. But it's always interesting when people don't show the context, there's usually a reason for it. And it, they are, it's right close. I don't know how far away the other building is, but it's, it's quite close, right? Yeah.
There's...
24 feet.
About 24 feet?
Should be 18.
At the closest point?
At the closest it could be, it's 18 on their side plus six, seven feet on his side.
Well, as you sure know, we spent a lot of time on that site across the way, which I always thought was a little too tight to begin with. But anyway, if there are no other further comments, we could probably entertain a motion.
Sure. Make a motion, the planning board recommend, to the Board of Appeals, conditional approval of the requested special permit finding under Section 4.06A for the reasons in the setbacks as it meets the criteria set forth in the Watertown zoning ordinance, subject to conditions 1 through 6 described in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. So, zoning board in two weeks.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks very much.
So there being no further business that I know of, we should stand adjourned. Go ahead. And we, nobody scored.